So this is the Ministry of Remedy Hearing Reference Number 2020 1000/0005. This is regarding Herefordshire County Council attempting to lay a claim, utilise legal fiction, the legal entity that has been deemed as invalid by the Administrative Court for use in litigation by the decree and determination of Justice Stein, who determined that Minister Imovin cannot be used for litigation. The Administrative Courts determined that Minister Imovin is not understood as a legal entity. And obviously, we agree with all of those things. The Minister Imovin is a quiet title and it represents any party, any being using it as somebody who has reached the legal majority. They have assigned all of their supposed assets, rights, shares of this planet and its resources into another trust to have them ministered in a way that is beneficial to them instead of being a liability. So the document came addressed to Minister Imovin, an address in Hereford. And a hearing, but no, it's not a hearing, was set for today at 1:30 at Herefordshire Civil Court. And we have a recording that is already up on YouTube, which sets out the already compromised state evidencing the claim that has manifest itself into bringing this Ministry of Remedy Hearing to be held, which was a claim made by the Community of Universal Law against Herefordshire County Council, saying that they were extorting money by menace, trying to enforce obligations of performance without valid contracts, operating and supporting slavery system, terrorism, false claim, attempted theft, and that it was forced commercial intercourse. Now, the public services that have been on offer from corporate councils across the country do not meet the lawful requirements that people are lawfully required to accept. Police who are not legally trained but forcing legal systems, Administrative Civil Code, onto people in our communities, even if we were going to contract with a private corporation in order for us to have our public services administered by them, if we were that crazy to do that in the first place, then we definitely would not be contracting with a company such as Herefordshire County Council. We've got some people down at... We've got people live down at the forum of fraud today at Herefordshire County Council. And we've got Minister Imovin down there. Minister Imovin, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello there. We are obviously doing a live broadcast out of the Ministry of Remedy Hearing with the reference 2020 1000/0005. We've received an email from somebody called Clover Perez Corral.
Did you receive the email from what? Sorry.
Somebody called Clover Perez Corral, who has said that there's no Zoom link today, but regarding an appointment now. You have at 1:30 this afternoon at Hereford Magistrates Court. Been in touch with Herefordshire Council and spoken to the gentleman Paul Evans, who deals with the liability orders. He's taken your name and confirms that you, whoever me is, are on the list. He says that it would be useful to be able to talk with you and that video link may not be necessary. Paul has asked that we get you on the phone at some point after 1:30 so that he can discuss matters with you. If you could provide a number, that would be great. However, you did seem a little unsure about doing that. So please give us a call around 1:30 and hopefully Mr. Evans will have some time available to speak with you. The number is the direct Usher boost number I gave you earlier. So somebody has been in contact with Clover Corral and they've kindly sent us over an email. Have you heard anything down there about any hearing or any appointment?
No, we're just on the outside. We haven't even been in to ask yet, so we can just go in and ask.
No, I don't think you need to do that. I think if you want to instead open the Zoom and come into the Ministry of Remedy, we have one of you on the phone as well available. One of you have the phone, one of you have Zoom. And I'm going to call them. I'm going to call them and see what it is that they have to say about attempting to utilise legal fiction that has already been deemed invalid to be used for litigation. Okay.
Okay. Do we need to move somewhere away from the court? Because it's quite noisy here, so it's difficult to hear you here then.
No, because you're going to need to go to arrest them, aren't you?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Bye.
Okay, I'll speak to you in a bit. Now, there's warrants. The reason why we talked about arresting them. Committing false claim, occupying buildings where you have no right to right of use, which is being seen all over the country by these corporate state entity legal fiction systems, implying that they've got some jurisdiction in our communities any longer. The legal system, the legal fiction system, Commercial Code, Administrative Code, is what has been secured and that was exemplified last week when we had Administrative Court exemplify that they can't lay a claim against a quiet title. And they can't lay a claim against their secured party creditors, which is who we are. And either you are a secured party creditor or you're not. If you are a secured party creditor, then you won't be crediting HM Government or any of the agents by using a legal fiction that they already have determined as invalid. And I don't mean Minister Imovin at this point. The legal fiction that they determined was invalid was actually one of theirs that is already used to launder, to take the charges out of for the help with fees court fund account, which is what your national insurance account is for, for discharging charges. But because it had all of its rights reserved, it meant they couldn't do their little laundry service, their tips service in the background, which is why they didn't want it to continue. Now, obviously, if there are liabilities that we're not aware of and that somebody obviously took a legal fiction, fixed a contract with it and said it was me somewhere, then the council, obviously, have got some charges and we're more than happy to discharge them against the 10 quadrillion slave token debt, which is still outstanding as we assign the collateral from HM Government jurisdiction back into the hands of the people through the restoration of rights process. And if we are getting obstructed in this lawful remedy and settlement service by these agents dressed up as police, then we definitely cannot ever be considered to be actually funding or crediting such a psychotic state. It would be psychotic of us to go and pay these people to then prevent us from committing our... performing our lawful obligation. So we're going to give the telephone number a ring now. Just get the other people into the Ministry of Remedy Hearing CVP link equivalent. And if you can just put yourselves on mute, we're just going to give... I don't know who it is that we're actually calling. Are we calling the court now? It's not the court's number. It's another number. 0156254126. Obviously, we have to put them on notice. We have to caution them that anything that they do say will be used and is being used evidence.
Sir, from magistrates.
Oh, hello. Is that Clover?
It is.
Hello Clover.
Who am I speaking to? Helen.
You're speaking to Minister Imovin. You've sent me an email.
Hello.
Hello, you sent me an email.
I'm speaking to...
You've sent me an email.
Yeah?
It's Minister...
Which email is that? Is that for Minister Imovin?
It is. Imovin, Minister Imovin. Hello.
Imovin. Okay. So are you speaking on his behalf at the moment? Because I spoke to him earlier.
There's that. Well, I have sent you an email. I'm Minister Imovin 010. And we've sent you over an email explaining regarding the fact that by this Herefordshire Council not singling out one Imovin from another, there's 22 million Minister Imovins. So which one, which one do you want?
What is that? Is it a term that is used for a lot of people or...?
It's a legal entity. It's actually a quiet title. And I sent you over...
It's a title?
It's a quiet title.
I don't have anything from you. I'm looking at my emails just now and I... Did you return an email? Did you return an email to me?
No, I sent an email to the court yesterday at hw-listing@justice.gov.uk.
That's at our Worcester admin. Yeah.
After speaking...
So I need to call them. Sorry. So it's just a bit of a delay. Carry on. Sorry.
After speaking to an agent there with the identification 3228. So instead of me obviously asking their legal fiction and encouraging them to commit fraud by claiming something they didn't have the right of use of, they do have the right of use of an identity number. So HMCTS, like we just said, at Worcester Admin, Agent Reference 3228, confirmed to me yesterday that the Herefordshire Council have already paid the court. Making the court unbiased.
I'm not sure what you mean.
I'm not sure what it was that he meant. Obviously, it's the council paid the fee to the court, is what he said, and hired the court.
Oh, what happens is basically Herefordshire Council, they come into our courtroom here and they use the space. We don't actually... That's why I couldn't really help Minister Imovin when he called me this morning. I couldn't help him that much. I said to him that I needed to call Herefordshire Council because they have all of the lists and all the details of what they're going to speak to people about. With some people, on some instances, they do take them into the court. The court is available there with a legal advisor and magistrate to go into the court. Quite often, they are able to resolve things with people just by taking them to a conference room and having a chat with them, which is what is happening now. So...
What do you mean, what's happening now?
Minister Imovin or Minister... I'm not sure how to sort of... I know they have Minister Imovin down as the person they need to contact and the gentleman in charge, Paul Evans, I mentioned in the email, he's here now. If I could grab him, maybe you could have a word with him because he said that this could probably be resolved without a video link. Because usually what they do is they get people to come in and once they have a chat and they chat through what people could do in order to resolve the problem, there's no actual need for them to go to court.
They actually, while you're there as the court then, my counterclaim is that this company hasn't got a contract. It's in occupation of people's rights.
I'll just stop you because I don't have any detail about this matter at all. Herefordshire Council come in, they bring all of their details with them. This is a magistrate's court. So if you were here, if someone was to come in... Sorry, well, is this a council tax? No. Okay. Just a second. If you were to come in and you have a hearing for a criminal matter, I would have all the details. But the Herefordshire Council and the council tax matters, they're separate. And all of the staff, they come in from Herefordshire Council.
I'm saying to you...
They use the building.
I'm saying to you...
And so I don't have any details.
Okay, I'm saying...
You'd have to speak to Paul Evans, who is here from the council and then he could advise you on what this matter was about. I don't have any, any details at all. He asked me to get Minister Imovin to call to see if he could be free, so he could speak to him on the phone. So I can go and ask him if he's free to come to the phone now, if he wanted to hold.
Okay, just a second. First of all, you deal with criminal matters. Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're the magistrate's court, so...
Okay, well, that man there, I'm making a report to you now that that man there, Mr. Paul Evans, or the party who is attempting to use that legal fiction...
You can't report anything to me. I'm just not sure.
Okay, so...
You can't report anything to me.
Okay, so what you're doing is you're actually facilitating, I'm now, I'm telling you now that you're facilitating the aiding and abetting of corporate theft, terrorism and attempted fraud.
I don't know if you understand that I'm here just as an usher, as a messenger. I take phone calls.
Okay, well, I've just given you a message.
I'm just doing my job here. All I'm doing is putting you in contact with the person you need to speak to in order to get your particular matter resolved.
And I'm telling you that the initiation of that matter... I'm telling you that you are aiding and abetting criminalities.
There's absolutely no point in saying things like this to me because this is just my job. I'm just...
Okay, and I'm just putting you on notice that your job is to aid and abet fraud and theft. And that is going to be exemplified here today. Pardon?
Of course it is. My job here is to take messages and pass that on to whoever is the relevant person that you need to speak to in order to get your matter resolved.
Even if they're criminals.
That's my job.
Even if they're criminals.
That's my job.
What, to aid and abet criminals?
Well, I deal with criminals every day here, don't I? People come into hearings.
Yes, you actually work for them, but thank you for acknowledging that. So here we have...
I know I work for them. I work as someone who puts them in and takes them into court and gives them a solicitor. That's what I do for a job here part-time.
Oh, I meant that it was the solicitors that were the criminals.
So if you're speaking to the wrong person, if you want to make a point about something or you want to make a complaint, then you need to write to either the police, to the county court, which I can give you all these numbers. But what I suggest you do, if you really want to get the matter resolved, is speak to the gentleman who is here specifically for these matters that you're listed for. And that would be the best way to go. If you speak to him, he'll know much more about it. He'll be able to advise you, he'll be able to understand what you're talking about. I don't. So if you're willing to hold the line, I'll just go and ask him if he can take the call.
I would like to thank you very much for your testimony, the creditor of Clover Perez Corral.
What is your name, please, so that I can just give him the name?
Minister Imovin.
What is your name?
Minister Imovin.
Sorry? Okay, so the person I spoke to earlier today also has the same title.
Yes, they have the right of use of the title Minister Imovin. Herefordshire Council do not.
Okay, they can, he can now come and speak to you about that, but who is that is he's trying to get hold of. He may have the wrong person.
He said I have.
So let's just go, I'll go and speak to him. If you stay on the line, I won't be a second. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
So somebody who's down there, right, Paul Evans on the terrorist ticket.
I'm just going to play on the phone to you now. Okay?
Thank you.
Hello, it's Mr. Paul Evans.
Good afternoon. Is that the once creditor of the account, Mr. Paul Evans?
I am basically representing the council, yeah.
And well, how are you representing a legal entity that is secured by Universal Law Community Trust, first of all?
We go by council tax legislation, which is actually by acts of parliament.
Which is secured under the UCC one filing 2020?
I... Do you want to come into court to dispute the actual liability?
I, first of all, I want to know where is your assignment of consent or your authority to act or your right of use of the legal entity Minister Imovin?
Well, you need to, if you look at the council tax legislation, you'll see all the powers that we got there. Like in Act, section 223 of the actual Local Government Act 1972.
Okay, but I don't have a contract with you.
Your contract is actually the council tax.
I don't have a contract with you.
When the other demand comes out, if you wish to dispute it, you would need to come to court. So I could actually adjourn the court to the next month so you can actually come in front of the magistrate and actually say, well, you feel it's unfair?
Well, unfortunately, I sent you over a document that is a determination from Justice Stein.
When did you send over the document?
We sent that yesterday to, after having a conversation with somebody at the office there who kindly pointed out...
Which email address did you send it to? So you never sent it to the council, you sent it to the magistrate's court?
That's correct. It's the same thing, I understand.
It's not. You need to resend that to the council, the council email address.
You are their stakeholders. Herefordshire County Council are the stakeholders of the court.
So if you're, what you're saying is, the fact is that we are governed, we've had these cases before. We are governed by the actual Local Government Finance Act.
Okay, so let me just stop you there. Let's take, instead of having you babbling along, okay, let me just stop you there. The Acts and Statutes are only applicable to legal fictions that are copyrighted by Crown Corporation.
If you want to dispute that, then you need to...
I really don't need to dispute any of this. What I'm putting you on notice is that I have issued a warrant for your arrest for aiding and abetting a criminal act of attempted fraud, false claim and theft. I'm now putting you on notice that if you continue to attempt to aid and abet any more criminal acts out of that venue, then you will be arrested.
If you feel this unfair, you need to come to court.
Unfair doesn't come into it when you're committing fraud. You are committing fraud. If you use the legal fiction Minister Imovin any way, shape or form...
It's not fiction, I'm afraid.
It, well, you're, are you arguing with Justice Stein?
We're just going to go around in circles.
No, we're not going around in circles. Do you know who Justice Stein is?
We'll get the liability next month.
Do you know who Justice Stein is?
I say, I'm just going to leave it there now.
Do you know who Justice Stein is? Before you incriminate yourself any further, you are now undermining your own Admiralty Court, Administrative Court system. Yes, you are.
If you want to actually say it's unfair, illegal, then you need to come to court, you have to fight the magistrate.
I'm not saying that. You are. You're the one making the claims. You are the one using a legal fiction, but you are not... Imovin, Minister Imovin, you are speaking to Minister Imovin and I haven't granted you the right of use of my legal fiction.
So basically, you're going by a pseudonym, basically?
No, I'm not. Minister Imovin is a quiet title and Justice Stein from your...
If I remember right, it's business something. I Googled it earlier.
Really? So you're using Google as your point of reference, really?
No, I just, I just want to see, well, you know, I know, I say, we've had these, we've had these actual...
You've had nothing like this before because I'm your secured party predator and you have never, ever encountered anything like this before.
If you want to dispute it, we've had these sort of cases before. If you want to dispute it, then you can come to court next month.
Oh, well, I'm most definitely not coming anywhere at all because Justice Stein, who is your Administrative Court, Supreme Court's Lord Ladieship of the Ship, Vessel Majesty's Government, has determined that Minister Imovin is not valid for litigation and stamped it. Now, I sent you a copy of that yesterday.
We haven't received anything.
Oh, well, that is not, you need to communicate. You need to communicate with your agencies.
I can't, it seems to be looking at something I haven't received.
Okay, well, then you shouldn't be using the courts then. You shouldn't be using...
The text that's sent out to you was all the email addresses that you could actually email to. You have an email to those addresses. If you email to those addresses, we'll have a look at it.
I re-mailed it to the court. You can get it from the court, okay? Thank you very much for your participation today and incriminating yourself even further. And I had the testimony of Mr. Paul Evans.
Oh, he's gone, has he?
Yes. Yeah. So the, the point here is that they have already received, they are saying that they are listing the court hearing at Hereford Magistrates Court, which is why we contacted them yesterday to find out, was this being facilitated by Hereford Magistrates Court? Now, as HMCTS, this email has come from HMCTS and we were just acknowledging the hypocrisy of the determination of Justice Stein, stating that COVID is not a valid grounds or cause. Well, it's there on the bottom of the email underneath HMCT Tribunal Services logo with coronavirus underneath there. So it's not that we are the ones making the claims. They are the ones making the claims now. And this is so important that people get their heads around. They have turned around and said that their Administrative Courts and systems, the Administrative Code practices, the legal entities is all invalid. They took Minister Imovin as a legal entity and gave it a date of birth, creating a legal entity within their system. That invalidates anybody's belief surely in what is valid legal ID. If I can just give a name and you're going to say, right, okay, well, that name doesn't exist in my system. So now I'm going to take it and I'm going to make it exist and I'm going to give it a fake date of birth. Then all of that system that is based on anything to do with being birthed into any system on any date of any year is fraud. And so in order for them to really uphold universal law, which is, they have to do that no matter what. So everybody has to be put in a position or ready to put themselves in a position where I will not compromise myself for anything less. I do not accept anything other than law. Now, the lady there who was just speaking to Clover, having her testimony there on record that I've now made, she's there representing the criminality of the magistrate's court and ushering them into the system, facilitating that criminal act void of valid claim or contract and expects people to actually be summoned by these criminals who are extorting money by menace, who do not have an assignment of consent or any authority to act. They do not hold the assignment of consent of the equitable rights of the people anymore and that they've all been assigned across under universal law and secured. So I do hope that they reschedule this for next month where they are then going to, it's like a fishing exercise. It's like, can we get somebody to hold the liability for this matter? And there you are. You've got Minister Imovin as a quiet title with no ability to lie about anything and the ability to discharge all the charges. So we're quite happy. We didn't let me get to that point. We're quite happy if there is a contract that has been entered into and has, somebody has assigned their consent to Herefordshire Council to give them these public services that are criminal by every definition. And then we're more than happy to discharge those charges against the outstanding debt in a debt equity swap, discharging that debt, those charges against these outstanding charges over here that have been exemplified very well last week. Thank you, Justice Stein, for facilitating that for us. Where they can no longer argue they don't know how 10 quadrillion and charged... Where they can no longer argue that they don't know how 10 quadrillion charges are domestic itself because now they exemplified that to themselves once more and to everybody else publicly. And so now it's a matter of executing the warrants. There's now needs to be a terrorist ticket issued for both the creditors of the accounts titled Clover Perez Coral and Paul Evans. It's a shame really that it has to, these people are probably very nice people and like you said, it's just doing a job. But if your job is to uphold an already established as invalid system by the people who are the chief justices of it all and you are still determined to go and support and credit it, then you are the liability holder in due course for the debts and charges that come from that. And there isn't anywhere left to hide. So the seal on this particular part obviously is these two parties now added to the overall trial against the agents of HM government within the Ministry of Remedy forum. So we're just going to issue the, we're just going to issue the warrants. There are some warrants to execute, but I think you're in another jurisdiction there with the, I think that's going police that you've got. I don't think we've got any there for Hereford at the moment. But I would now, and I am endorsing the terrorist tickets to be issued to both of those parties based on their evidence and testimony today. Does anybody object?
No.
Okay.
Minister 128 has gone in somewhere. I'm not sure where he's gone.
Okay, so just let me know when that's done and we've got no objections to the issuing of the terrorist tickets upon those...
But he doesn't know who he's...